Welcome to the Rotary Club in Adonia Hills. My name's Steve Bajinski, I'm this year's president. Thanks for joining us. I don't see, I do not see John Graves for the invocation. So, I guess I will do the invocation unless somebody else would like to. I welcome anybody else's prayers. Okay, please bow your head in the spirit of prayer. Lord, thank you for bringing us all together today during the holiday season. Please give us the strength and courage to battle through these tough times and provide our club with all the the help that our Rotary Club needs and all the clubs around the world to provide help to families and communities in need. Please keep us safe during our journey during this holiday season and help us fulfill our mission of making the world a better place for all. And for all those eating lunch, bless this food. In the name of God, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, Debbie, can you pull the flag up for us? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to do the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under the indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any Rotaryan guests that I don't see in the background? Looks like most of us are part of our Rotary Club here.
I know that Julie Delosio has a guest, Ravi, from Jackson Comfort.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me today.
Thanks for joining us, very appreciated.
Thank you.
Looks like my daughter Amanda just joined us and I'm sure my wife Debbie's in the background, thanks for joining us today. Hi Amanda.
I thought you said today was the choir, did you get the dates mixed up?
It's gonna be, give me time. Okay. Any other guests?
Ms. Augustine's joining us today as well.
Welcome, thank you.
I like how Amanda just jumped to, did Steve get the dates?
The best part of the whole thing, right? What's the holdup here? She figures she's gonna jump right at it, she's gonna hear some singing going on. We'll get to it honey, don't worry. Okay, this day in history. Let's see, today on December 15th in 1791, the Bill of Rights was ratified, providing the first 10 amendments to the US Constitution, so that was a big day. There was a kind of a weird day in chess that Tony probably remembers. On December 15th, 1992, Bobby Fischer was served an indictment to stop his match with the Russian. Who was that Russian, Tony?
Boris Spassky.
That's who it was. So that was kind of a weird day for all you chess people out there. The Trivial Pursuit game was invented on December 15th, 1979, and one year in 1984 sold 15 million board games alone in just one year. That's pretty crazy. Sitting Bull, the famed Indian leader, was shot and killed on December 15th, 1890 when he was served an arrest warrant. A big fight broke out and let's see, the people they were indicting were also killed. That was a crazy thing for Sitting Bull. And Walt Disney died on this day in December 15th, 1966. Walt Disney currently holds the record for most Academy Awards earned by an individual, having won 22 Oscars and 59 nominations. So he's still pretty doggone famous out there. Thomas Edison, on this day in 1877, issued his patent for the phonograph. And last, the F-22 Raptor stealth fighter enters active service with the US Air Force on this day in 2005. So that's what I got in this day in history. Birthdays, December 19th is Paige's birthday. Happy birthday Paige. Should we all sing happy birthday to her?
Happy birthday Paige!
Thanks Amanda, no, no, it's okay. I'll have that for Rotoroki when we do it.
Alright, you know, you don't know what you're missing, we got a lot of good voices here.
Yeah, particularly when you can mute them all.
You'll just see mouths going.
That's it, you don't have to listen to any of it.
Well, happy birthday Paige.
Steve?
Yep.
There is one other birthday we forgot, and that's past District Governor Cheryl Warren. It's her birthday.
Well, happy birthday to Cheryl Warren. We also have a couple spouses' birthdays today. Nicole Seward, Brian Seward's wife, it's her birthday on December 22nd. And Dino Gentile, Diane Gentile's husband, his birthday's on December 25th. Happy birthday and Merry Christmas. We also have an anniversary, Nicole and Brian Seward, 20 years, 11 months on December 29th, 1999. So happy anniversary to them. And we have a couple of anniversaries coming up as far as days of joining Rotary. Tony Dunlop, two years, 11 months on December 19th. Congratulations Tony. And again Brian, Brian Seward, he's two years, 11 months on December 19th also, so congratulations to those two. We had a lot going on as far as birthdays go, since we're not gonna see each other for the next couple of weeks.
My anniversary is this month too, 22nd, 47 years.
How did I miss that?
Wow, no, it's okay.
I didn't print up on our, let me look at that again.
It might not be in Club Runner, if you could check it, make sure it's in Club Runner.
Yeah, see if it's in Club Runner Laura, so.
Because it should come up on Steve's list. And anyway, just go into Club Runner and make sure all your dates are in there, so we don't forget anybody.
Yeah.
It'd be appreciated because we love announcing the special days. Okay, anyone got any jokes for us, Dave?
Yes, we do Steve. Apparently RSVP-ing back to a wedding invitation, maybe next time, isn't the correct response. Well, that one felt like a lead balloon.
Maybe everyone was muted Dave.
I needed to be muted. I've got, I've got a visual over here you might like to see, you know, with the Chief Wahoo going away. Who can see it?
Nobody.
Can't quite see it, it's got a kind of blurred.
Wow, how could it be blurred? Tell me when you can see it. You don't want to see all that crap, there might be something in there.
Go a little closer to the camera. Closer. Little closer.
What is it?
Oh, Indians and Wahoo.
No, it's not, it's, it's the Italians. You've got Tony down there with his mustache and the Italians.
I got a couple jokes for you. What do you call a cow with a twitch?
Go ahead.
Beef jerky. And I do have one holiday joke. Why did Frosty ask for a divorce from Mrs. Frosty?
Afraid to ask.
He melted.
No, she was just a total flake. Okay, we'll move on after that.
I have one.
Okay, what's that?
How many elves does it take to change a light bulb?
How many?
Eight, one to change the bulb and seven to stand on each other's shoulders.
Nice job Amanda.
You're welcome.
Okay, any happy or sad dollars?
I'm ambivalent, I enjoyed the football game, it was exciting, but they lost.
So that's a sad dollar.
That's a sad dollar.
Happy that they were competitive anyways though, right?
Anytime you score 42, you ought to win.
That's right. Well, I'm happy my wife made it back from West Virginia, her car broke down yesterday.
Oh boy.
Actually, it broke down on Sunday, so I wasn't sure when she was gonna get back in between storms because they're getting hit with a storm tonight, so. But she made it back at four o'clock yesterday, right before this next snowstorm hit in West Virginia, so happy to have her back, Amanda.
Yep, we're happy to have her home.
Anybody else?
I'll do a happy buck for my birthday, birthday's my favorite holiday, so I celebrate and then it's time for Christmas, so woo-hoo.
That is a good month for you, you have a birthday and you get all those presents. How many times does someone say, well, this is your birthday and Christmas present?
Just grateful to get a gift, I guess.
Well, my wife's birthday's January 2nd, and I found out early on in our relationship that that's not allowed. This is your, this is your Christmas, your birthday present? No, that didn't go over well.
More of the complication that I fall into is people ask, oh, you know, what do you want, what do you need? And then it's like you have one shot a year to get everything you want or need, and then, you know, we don't need anything and don't, you know, so it's just kind of funny. So usually it's a little bit of a mishmash in what you get.
Yep, Debbie would agree.
Girl here. She came in about three years ago.
Anybody else?
Very quiet, she's now the secretary.
Alright, today we have an Adonia High School choir, cock choir. It's a recording that we're gonna play for everybody, so we'll pull that up on my screen share and everyone sit back and enjoy. Make sure I can do this here.
Oh, okay, I guess that's.
Sorry people.
This was done because they're off so close and they don't have masks on.
I know. You see how. This is even worse.
Our next selection is On Luke's Bagdissima, translated in the light 11, Call My Inmost Heart.